Board meeting tonight, and we want to thank FISD for allowing us to use their facilities. While the chambers are being, council member, uh, meeting room is being renovated at, at City Hall, we understand that we'll be back there by February. Well, we're going to have our invocation tonight with Pastor David Lorenz. First Baptist, if you don't mind standing.
Will you bow with me, please? Hey, Father, tonight as we come, pray blessing over our city council. Pray that you would continue to bless them and honor them as they serve faithfully, they make decisions regarding our city, help them to have a spirit of unity and harmony as they do so, even in disagreement, where they walk together. Father, for our city employees, we pray blessing over them as they carry out both the mundane and the important. We pray that you would give them clarity and perseverance, to give them a, a sense of, of your presence, that they're working for the greater good of all people in our community. But for our first responders, we're so grateful for how they respond quickly, they keep us safe, they offer care and compassion for those that need. And God, finally, I pray for the citizens of Friendswood, that we would be a people who work together to continue, uh, building on the foundation of faith, education, and family. You would bless us as we seek to be a blessing to others. We ask this in your name, amen. Now our pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the text flag, pledge allegiance to the text, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
It goes downhill. Yeah, he missed.
All right, council comments, uh, we'll start over here.
Well, thank you very much. It was a really, really busy month. I was kind of looking back through and looking at all the things that were going on. The city was involved in a whole lot of it, and, uh, starting with our national night out. I just want to thank our first responders. I know you went to a lot of different homes, sorry, I've got a frog tonight. A lot of different homes around our community, and I just wanted to thank y'all for that extra time. Um, it means a lot. I know in our little neighborhood, the kiddos get so excited when all the big vehicles come, the fire trucks, the ambulances, the police cars, they just love all that. So, I really appreciate that y'all take that extra time to do that. Um, we also had the volunteer fire department open house, so our firefighters have been very, very busy this. Um, Councilmember Trangin, myself, were able to attend the 10th Annual Houston-Gowson Area Council Bringing Back Main Street meeting, and that was a lot of fun. And it was kind of fun just to reminisce about all the things and all the improvements that have happened just over the last 10 years in our own downtown, but also to see what was happening in other communities surrounding us, what was happening in their downtown. So, the movement is really having a very positive effect in our communities. Um, had the opportunity also to go to a Bayhap meeting and hear Adrian Garcia come and speak to us, and I don't know if y'all know or not, but he's the one who partnered with the city of Friendswood, uh, precinct two Harris County, for our Blackhawk Road, which I know that those who lived along there, it's always a pain when the construction's going on, but it's really lovely once it's all done. Um, then, it was like an anniversary month, uh, Transportation Policy Council was celebrating its 50th anniversary. It started out 50 years ago. It covers eight counties in our area, so not quite as large as HGAC, which is 13 counties. But that's really, truly, everyone has a chance to sit at the table, big or small communities, and talk about the transportation needs in their community. So, it's been very powerful, very effective, and we appreciate that partnership as well. Um, Councilmember Trangin, myself, also Marat, he's probably going to talk about this already, and Stephen, and Glenda, and...
Letty.
Letty, where's Letty? Okay, well, Letty was there. We all got to go to the Texas Municipal League's Conference in Fort Worth, I love you. Um, Fort Worth is a really cool town, and they did a great job of hosting us, and I'm sure we'll be talking about different things that, um, happened at that. But one thing that was just an underlying that I picked up on is that TML is there to try to help support cities and help us have the legislation in place to support us to be able to be effective in our own communities. Um, and then I do want to, uh, talk about Rotary Club, sponsored this past Saturday, a, it's called Adulting 101, I think it's the third year that we've done this, and we're bringing in juniors and seniors, um, from the high schools, and kind of teaching them the things that they hope that they would like to know or should know as they leave home, and that could be going off to college, that could be entering into their first job, and it's simple things like how to load a dishwasher, how to change a tire, how to put gas in their cars, you know, things like that. So, it is really great, and it was an honor to be a part of that. And then, um, I also want to mention that right now, and you're probably going to see these flyers around town, but the Rotary Club is also doing a food drive for the entire month of November to gather up canned goods, and one of the drop-offs, uh, for those canned goods is the Chamber of Commerce, also Hometown Bank, Hopping Eye and Associates, or Minuteman Press. So, if you've, uh, would like to make some donations, you can stop by any of those locations, they have nice big bins, you just walk in, drop it off, and you're done. And then the final thing I'd like to say is tomorrow's election day, I'm not going to tell anybody how to vote, but I would encourage everyone to vote, it's a chance to have your voice heard, so, thank you.
Well, I think Councilmember Ranson pretty much said it all, except that, um, Fall Hall is coming up this Saturday, correct? And so, it's at Centennial Park, and so if you have things that you want to get rid of, or donate to a community garage sale, uh, the, the park will be open early in the morning, and people will be there to take care of things, as well as shredding. And, um, I would encourage everybody to vote as well, and, um, just, KFB's got a lot of exciting things planned for the, for the holidays, along with the park department, uh, and the decorations, so I'm excited to see how our town will be lit up in the next few months.
Councilmember Grifon?
Right, well, thanks. Dave, I do have a little bit of an update here. Um, if you are a veteran, the city of Friendswood wants to honor you. Uh, we have a Veterans Day celebration on November the 10th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Friendswood Activity Center, and, uh, I have the honor and privilege to liaison with the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and they have a lot of things going on over there, and, um, I received in the mail, uh, issue number three, they call it the Flood Gate Flyer, and I, I know you can go online to the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage website and push blogs and announcement, and you will also see it there, but I think you can also sign up and get a physical copy of it. But it just gives you an outline of what the, uh, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District is doing. Um, they have a lot of things going on with Texas A&amp;M, with the, uh, Institute for Disaster and Resiliency, Texas, it's called an IDRT, it was launched, and this was across Clear Creek and Clear Lake. Uh, they're studying, uh, the sedimentation and seeks to understand, uh, sedimentation rates and identify obstructing objects within waterways using advanced, um, air and ground and water reconnaissance. And study two is possible gate and pump flood impact test, what-if scenarios, um, using a simulated gate and pump system to see how they could help reduce flooding for our communities with Clear, Clear Creek and Clear Lake watersheds now and in the future. Um, they go into some more detail about the sedimentation study and actually how they are actually using sonar and core samples to figure out how that is done, and one of the things that the Echo, uh, Strata, uh, boat that they had out there and doing side samples and things like that, they found a car that's over, that was over by, um, what was the park that was closed down over there? Challenger, Challenger? Yeah, they found a car over there, and, uh, they're doing a lot of things in, um, um, I think that they're going to get the Corps involved with a lot of this stuff, so if you want to get this or go read it, I encourage you to do so, it's really pretty cool. And I also chair the Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee, and on, over the 14th, we did have our, uh, our meeting, and Anthony Talluto provided the update for the League City regarding the Lower Clear Creek Flood Mitigation Study, and League City is going full steam ahead with proceeding through the Corps with a Section 203 study regarding feasibility for the Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bio. The city manager of League City and mayor, and Galveston County Commissioner Hank Doogie, went to Washington C, DC, a couple of months ago, and they met with the Assistant Secretary of the Army and presented some of the projects that they're trying to do with this mitigation study to get buy-in from the Corps, and they bought in, and, uh, they're, they're proceeding with a two-way or three-way study for the project. They are now working to finalize the scope of the work and get their approval on the scope of the work. They will, uh, then finalize the dollar amount for the study and then work with all of their local partners to help fund the project. They're looking at, um, completing this sometime at the end of next year. The study will cost $3 million, and if they do spend all the $3 million, they're looking at an additional $1.8 million of environmental impact studies that go along with that. Uh, they're hoping, uh, the intention is to go through with $3 million and get funding from Congress, uh, but if, the main plan is if they can get this done by the end of next year, they might be able to do some more smaller manageable $50 million projects, if you can imagine that that is smaller manageable project, but when you're talking about five and $700,000, uh, million-dollar project, $50 million is, uh, a lot more doable for a lot of municipalities if they get funding, uh, maybe from the state legislature, which they are hoping to do. Uh, we had an update from Melissa Washington, um, they're going through their design phases and engineering, and they are currently waiting on Hurricane Barrel funding to come out, which should hopefully be at the beginning of next year. And we got an update from Amy Skiki with BayTrend. BayTrend started a drainage committee this year, they meet the first Wednesday of every month at League City Chamber in the classroom at 11:00 a.m. Anybody is welcome to join. Uh, Galveston County Commissioner Hank Doogie chairs that committee, uh, there is a Zoom link for each one, and when they post their meetings, they post them on their website, so you can just go on, you can sign up if you want to attend, or, uh, you can, uh, link into their Zoom meetings and do it that way. And the Dickinson Bio Watershed Steering Committee will be having their meeting tomorrow morning at the same place in League City Chambers, um, and that's at 9:00 a.m., so that's, wanted to, oh, and I did want to mention, the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District does, I believe, have some, uh, catchwater barrels that are still available, and if you look at the, uh, website, you'll see it, they're, I think, $79, uh, each, and I think I got a couple set aside. I have, uh, catchwater for my chickens, and I'm thinking about trying to figure out how to catchwater for my horses, because they drink about 30 gallons a day, and all I see is dollar signs going through my head, so, that's my update.
Councilmember Trangin?
Yes, first, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight, I really appreciate everybody coming tonight. Uh, the second is, well, obviously, I'm going last on the council, so, of my nine events that I was going to talk about, well, eight have already been taken care of. Uh, I will say that I did, was able to attend the Halloween in the park, I don't know if any of you were able to make that, but it was an outstanding event, any of the city's staff were there and handed out information to our residents, and so I think it was a, just a, a great event, and I appreciate all the support from the chamber and all the city staff and all the vendors that were there. Uh, I will add on one thing to, uh, Councilmember, Member Grifon's comment about BayTrend, uh, starting up the drainage. I do attend those meetings, and the intent from that, um, that new committee is that so many of our drainage issues are not just Friendswood, it's regional. And so, again, trying to take a step back and looking at the bigger picture about where the water's coming from and where it's going, and why we need, and it's so important that we do that, because we can do a lot of things in Friendswood, and are still working to do a lot of things, uh, but it's bigger than that. So, this is in, that committee's in recognition of that, trying to make sure we're, we're communicating properly. So, that's all I had, thank you very much.
Well, all my thunder was stolen, stolen, so, I'll simply say this, we as citizens have certain rights and opportunities, among those are jury service and voting, uh, so, it's never a waste of your time to vote, so please study the issues, look at what's on the ballot tomorrow, and vote if you haven't. Another thing is, is jury service. I often get calls, people saying, "How can I get out of jury service?" And I always say, "You're asking the wrong question. You need to be asking, 'How can I serve?'" Someday, you may need a fair jury to hear your case, so never pass up that opportunity to get the chance. All right, we'll move on to public comment. To comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda as such. The city council will listen to public comment and may refer the item to city management for further action, or direct staff to place an item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with the council's rules on decorum. I have two, uh, speaker requests here. The first is Thomas Chastant, would please come forward? Chastant? If you don't mind, come right over here to the, to the dais, if you'll get a moment.
Thank you much for a chance to speak. I would like to say, in my dealings with Friendswood, it's, uh, this, your people do a great job, that's, so, thank you for that. Uh, what, uh, I'm Thomas Chastant, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Shepherd's Nook. Uh, it's a 401(c) corporation, it's a, operates a thrift store, a resale shop at 201 North Friendswood Drive, and, uh, the proceeds from that, a lot of them go directly to other 401(c)s, the food banks, uh, even a little bit to the Friendswood, uh, volunteer fire department. The issue today is that, uh, the property that they operate at 201 North Friendswood Drive is bounded on two sides, uh, by an open field that has, uh, been poorly maintained, and it seems to be maintained less and less, and the grass weeds, really, are quite high, and as you'll see on the pictures there, and we'll talk about, they're roughly, uh, six feet high, right around us, and some of the trees on that property kind of leaning over there. Unfortunately, the, the highest weeds are, happen to be around us further back, and I can say it's a, uh, 13 acres of property that have been up for sale for 25-plus years, uh, 10 acres are open field, uh, up toward, uh, the road. This, this property is on 201 North Friendswood Drive. The adjacent property's, uh, legal address, whatever, is, uh, is, uh, 205. Uh, like I say, our issue is that the property is not being maintained, the tall grass is creating an increasing fire and rodent issue, and, uh, that's, that's where we are. What has happened so far is I've talked to Ruben in the enforcement, uh, Code Enforcement, uh, Division, whatever you call it, and, uh, he sent out some certified letters, but they have been coming back, and this has all been in the last six months or so, and just in the last few weeks, he called the, and, uh, the name on the Realtor sign, and he got a number, and he said, "The city wants you guys to maintain the property." Well, we've had no response, and it's not, uh, no, no response, so I'm asking the, uh, city council to see if, uh, the employees can double down, or what can we do? We're hard, hard to reach these guys, and they're not responding, and, uh, and then, if things keep going down the road and they're not responding, this city could, whatever process you have, clear it, uh, public nuisance, whatever, and take over management. Uh, and I'm talking to Ruben, he says, "Well, you know, our first step is we mow 50, uh, feet around the perimeter of property, but with the size of this field and the height of the grass, and the closeness we are to the field, that's not going to kind of protect us from our two big issues." Uh, I would, if it proceeds on to that, it need, needs to be at least, not 50 feet, but a, a 50 yards, triple that, 150 feet, that the perimeter is mowed, and I like for the other neighbors that are there, Kroger shares some, some property and that, but Kroger's not involved in this request, but, uh, they're one of the property owners that adjacent to that, and so, uh, it needs to be mowed further back. I would suggest twice a, um, uh, every two months, and that the whole field be mowed every four months. If you, uh, look at the pictures, uh, you can see, we're looking across Broadway Street, you see a little bit of that blue build, and someone here, we painted it an outrageous blue a few years back, but, uh, you see where the field is a bit. The second picture is, uh, the corner of our property, you're looking at a perimeter fence there and back onto the field off to the right. The mold line is basically our property line, and you can see, see how the weeds grow up to the property line. And then this third picture, uh, stepped up on the ladder trying to look down on it, but it didn't get very far, but you notice that this, I took this picture today, if the grass is turning brown and increase, uh, because of the drier weather and the cooler weather, and it's an increased fire issue, and so, that's where we are, and I understand your statement that you can't take action today, and I think that's right, uh, but, uh, see what we can do and, uh, take action to, uh, get this problem fixed.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, our next speaker will be Dave, now, see if I can pronounce this one correctly, Yalovitch?
Good evening, council, uh, Dave Yalovick, Woodyer Oaks. I hope no, there's not an emergency, because the whole EMS staff is here, I don't know why, but in front of you, this wasn't on my list, but thank you, it's a great bunch of people that came to my house for a wife-related thing, and was it a hectic evening, but thank you all for what you do, it's incredible. Um, I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, uh, we used to call them patrol cars, police have patrol cars, and I was just kind of curious, my home office sits out over the intersection of Towns and Woodyer Oaks, and I sit there 10, 12, 14 hours a day sometimes, and I look out, and sometimes I daydream, but I'll be darned if never a day, never a day goes by that I see a patrol car come through our community. I'm wondering why that is. I don't know if, you know, the police department's here, what we can talk to them about and say, "Hey, whatever happened to policing and being, being part of the community?" Um, I know we have officers on bicycles now at events, I said, "That would be cool, the weather's kind of nice, having policemen go through the community on bikes and talk to the neighbors as they're cutting their grass or doing whatever." I'm just here to say, "Hey, Harris County, I don't see them, and if we could encourage our police department to get more involved, uh, you may see a patrol car on Blackhawk, but other than that, they're never, ever on the side roads." Speaking of Blackhawk, so, you brought up, don't ever bring up that project and say how beautiful it is, you can't use the term beautiful and Blackhawk project in the same sentence. It's been three years, actually, it's been 13 or 15 years. By the time we're done with Blackhawk, we approved bonds in 2013, and maybe, within 20 years, we'll have kept the promise that we gave residents back when we passed those bonds to repave that entire street. It's a disaster. I walk that thing almost every other day, I, doctor says I need to have steps, so I walk Blackhawk. It's about 900 feet in the construction zone, and do you know, if you walk it, I could have gone out there this weekend and painted the stupid stripes on the concrete myself, and we could have a completed job. All it needs is stripes. That's it, and we could clean up the median, yes, but what's holding us up? It's been a month or two in this exact condition. We were promised October 10th, again, another promise failed, and here we are approaching November 10th, and it's been sitting there, all it needs is stripes. Blackhawk Boulevard is a big red flag. You don't live there, but we live with it. By the way, get rid of that stupid speed bump on the northbound lane, that kills your back, thank you.
All right, our next agenda, I am, is to receive and discuss a presentation from the Emergency Medical Service Division, Chief Camp?
Real quick, before Chief Camp starts, um, I did want to mention, this was requested by Councilmember Grifon and some others a few months back, and so we thought it'd be a good opportunity to have a workshop with council regarding our EMS services and our ambulance.
Okay, hi. Oops. Uh, thank you, good evening, uh, for the opportunity to speak about Friendswood Emergency Medical Services and how we serve the community, it's near and dear to my heart, and I serve with a bunch of dedicated professionals who provide 24-hour emergency care to our citizens. Tonight, I want to go over a few things that were requested. Uh, we provide, again, high-quality service to the citizens of Friendswood since 1972, and we are Division of the Emergency Services now, and we work closely with fire and police. Our medics respond to all types of emergencies, medical trauma, and community assist calls. We are under the direction of Dr. Abel Longoria, our medical director, that provides us the license to give medical care to the residents and visitors of Friendswood. Currently, I have 49 people on staff, 14 full-time medics, 18 part-time, and 17 volunteer medics. We operate four licensed Texas Department of State Health Services mobile intensive care units, and two are on duty with two medics, 24/7, 365, and one paramedic supervisor stays in the city 24 hours a day to help, in case all the other ambulances are on calls. So, our calls for service have been increasing, um, especially after COVID, but we generally transport 60% of the calls that we go on, so we're at about 3,700 calls right now, we're running about, on our peak days, 18 calls between two trucks in a 24-hour period, so some of you hear us a lot, if you're going down 528, that's probably Alvin, but in the local neighborhoods, you'll, you will hear us, because we are quite busy. Um, the conversation has come up about fall calls. Fall calls relate to about 60% of the transports that are the fall-related, uh, responses. And, uh, so we're getting, we hit about 3,700 calls, we'll probably get to about 3,926. So, just a quick overview about our mobile equipment, we operate a type-one type ambulance. We started in 1972, we had an, a station wagon, and if you can imagine doing medical care in the back of a station wagon, an Ford LTD, for those of you who might remember, a Ford LTD, there was little to no room. So, we decided to go with the type-one ambulance. In 1972, we bought our first one, uh, it was out of Dallas, and then we were able to get to a manufacturer in Houston called Fraser, and so they started developing ambulances in 85, Houston got the first ones, and we came onboard with Fraser in 1988. So, we've had 37 years of success with the type-one type ambulance in our 53-year career. Real quickly, there's three different types of ambulances that the state looks at that are manufactured. The type-one, which we have, is a heavy-duty truck chassis with a separate box, the type-two is a van chassis, it's a little, it has very limited workspace from what we're used to, because we are able to move around in the back of the ambulance to all sides of the patient, where in a type-two chassis, you can only work on one side of the patient. And then there's a type-three with a chassis, a, a van chassis on a box. So, those are the three types of ambulances that the Texas Department of State Health Services recognizes, certifies, and are manufactured in the United States. Just a real quick overview, our type-one type trucks are an industry standard in our area, as you can see from the slide, the, the 911 municipal trucks are the workload trucks, we do the heavy-duty work, and these trucks are very, uh, sturdy for us in our environment. If we did a side-by-side comparison between a type-one and twi, type-two, there's differences between the type-one and the type-two, mileage, cost, differences like that. The road clearance on the Fords or the F-150s versus the vans types, you'll have better clearance for floods, and that's important to us, too, because we need to get to people. Uh, and then costs, a little bit about cost, uh, over a 14, 10-to-14-year period, the type-ones do cost a little bit more, but they provide more safety for us in this life So, some key decision points when we chose the type-one ambulance was, it is an industry standard, it's a workhorse, it provides a multimodal team configuration where more than one person could get in the back and take care of any patient, critical or not critical, it supports patients- It supports patient care with the MICU capabilities that we provide. It handles bariatric patients. It also handles multiple patients in the back of the ambulance, so we can transport more than one. Where in a Type 2 or a Type 3, we could only get one person in the back of the ambulance. And we have shown that this is a maximum safety vehicle for what we operate, both for the patients and for the staff. And it's been a reliable unit since 1988. So I'd like Dr. Longoria, he's our medical director, and a lot of you haven't met him. I've known him for many years. He is our medical director, and he gives us his medical license to practice medicine. And I know he had closed a letter to y'all, but I'd like to let him have the opportunity just to share a few words about our service.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Dr. Longoria, and I've been in the EMS world since probably 1978. I've been a practicing emergency physician since 1995. And in my pre-hospital, if you will, pre-hospital being EMS world, I have had the honor of being the ground zero medical director after 9/11 in New York. And in numerous hurricanes, so I think I know EMS fairly well. I'm extremely proud and honored to direct these great providers that we have. I say it often, I have the best gig in the world. They do all the hard work, and I get all the credit. And so, and really, we, you know, we work together. I think I'm a very involved medical director. I'm available 24/7, pick up the phone. I usually, I usually return the phone call or pick up if they need me. So when I'm, when, I'm concerned about changing what we've built. And we truly have a great service. And it's been recognized at the national level, at the state level, by, through numerous, numerous awards. And I worry that if we start looking and changing things, it could jeopardize some of those awards and jeopardize some of those standards. The reality is that our population is changing. We're getting older. So EMS is really, really important. We've all heard of that golden hour, which is what emergency medicine's all about, right? People get sick, the golden hour, you got to get, you got to get to them quickly. Well, that's what we do. And the beautiful thing about the way the ambulances are built is that we can actually, it's not just the golden hour, it's what we're doing in that golden hour. And our ambulances, we can access patients from the back, from the side. We carry, we have generators to do, that can do the entire CPR, ACLS, the ventilators are running, all kinds of stuff that we're doing. There's numerous, numerous studies that suggest that this is really the standard. And quite honestly, that's what I expect, and I know that that's what the citizens of Friendswood deserve. I was a little confused, and I think that the premise of the argument was regarding falls, and can we change a fall, can we do something else? I think that premise is flawed. Falls aren't necessarily accidents. They're a symptom of instability. What's causing the fall is the more important thing. The fall, if you, once we assess a patient, 60% are being transferred. And delaying that transfer would be, would cut into that, into that golden hour. So again, if we, if we think about a fall, and we look at it as far as a symptom, it could be a cardiac condition, it could be a metabolic issue, it could be someone that took too much blood pressure medicine, it could be a diabetic who sugar's dropping. So there's a lot of different reasons than just an accident. We could have someone that's almost was walking downhill, all right? These things happen, right? So, and it's, it's never a good time. When someone calls 911, it's never a good time. And so we're, we just want to make that bad hour better. And I think we do a great job at it. And again, it's my honor to serve. And I'm answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, do any of our council members have any questions?
I just have one or two. So in the area, and maybe Chief Camp could answer that, one of you is that, how do we compare, we, number of medics, number of ambulances that we have? How do we compare some of the neighbors that are in a similar size, not obviously larger ones? I'm just wanting to get a general feel.
So similar size, everybody around us is bigger. So they're operating three or four trucks right now. We're not as big as League City, Pearland, and Alvin. So we're doing very well. We're reaching that third truck with our call volume, and that is in our multi-financial plan in the next coming years to add that third truck. So we're, we're there, we're on the cusp. So we have this, we have the same equipment as the neighboring services, so we're in line with them 100%.
No doubt the standard is the Type 1 ambulance. I mean, that's the standard, right? So, and I think Chief's correct, we're rapidly approaching. And it's not only, again, it's, it's not just the city size, but it's also our demographic. Our demographics are, we're an older community. Construction is, is hard to get, it's hard, it's hard to get to. We're lucky in that we actually have hospitals that are not far away. We don't have those long drives that Alvin or farther down in Brazoria County have. So we're lucky we can get to a hospital fairly quickly. But on certain days and on certain times, those hours can be, minutes can turn into hours. And we're constantly looking at times. You can ask these guys all the time. I harp on times all the, I mean, I want, I want to know what's going on. So why are we there for 20 minutes? What have we done? And I mean, and it's, it's, and it's getting better. And that's really what we're all about, right? It's getting better, that we can, we can always do better. And I worry about taking a step back. So I hope that answers the question.
No, thank you. And the performance speaks for itself, and the number of awards. We're always in city council meetings talking about this award or that award that's been received by our EMS. So well done. Thank you. Thank you.
I have one question. Are there other communities, I know we prefer the Type 1, are there other communities that are using the other two types that were described? And if so, how is that working for them?
So I talked to the city of Alvin, and they bought a van-type ambulance, and they had it online for about a year, and then they took it offline because it just didn't function. And they, they actually had it set aside to only take certain calls. And what would happen is they would be overwhelmed and then still calling area ambulances for mutual aid because they had set it aside for certain types of calls, the low-acuity calls. And so they've actually parked it, and they're not using it. The only other ones that use a van-type, I know, I just talked to League City, they're going to get one on a grant to sit at a football game. But then again, they're just providing medical standby until, you know, the ambulance can come from the city service.
The reality is that as, as we grow, and we're having to staff another ambulance, it's, the cost of the human resource is going to be a lot more than the cost of the van and the cost of the replacement of a vehicle and the maintenance of a vehicle. If you, if, in the pre-hospital, if you notice all of us older guys, we all walk with a limp or we all walk hunched over because it's not, it's not easy to ride in the back of a truck. We're going through some, some bad bumps, and we're going through fast. And when you start looking at these bigger Ford big chassis, and they get beat up, when it's time to change, if it is six years down the road, you can just change the box and you can do a couple of things rather than having to buy a whole new system. So in the long run, you know, if we, if we stay focused and stay focused with what we want and what the goal standards are, which is really what medicine's all about, we're always talking about the goal standard, is really not necessarily to go step backward. And I think you're not going to say, saving money is always important. I understand budgets, trust me, I get it. But if we're gonna, if we're going, if the, if the point is to have a substandard ambulance for a subset of patients, who's, who's staffing it? So if, so now you have to add more staff, well, you just, you just ate up the cost, right? So that's, I, I, I think that's a completely different question, and I think we'd be happy to look at that. But if it's, if it's, if, if it's a matter of we need to make budget cuts, let's look at more other ways to do it rather than to jeopardize the care that could be provided to our citizens.
Any further questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. First of all, I would like to thank our EMS and Lisa for pulling this together because we were throwing around numbers in our workshop at budget time that we really weren't really solid on the numbers. Now, I had been given a cost of about $185,000 for the Type 2 van-type deal. And based on what you provided us, between $150,000 and $250,000. And we can call them substandards, they're a different use vehicle. And the premise was never falling, okay? My dad fell in February. Our EMS dispatched him to the hospital, and he succumbed and died on March 1st. So it was never strictly about falling. The premise was to get coverage in our dispatch, being able to determine if it was a serious enough call or a not very serious call, and then save dollars not only on the equipment but FTEs, full-time employees. And what I really appreciate about what you provided us here is the cost was not as much as we were throwing around in budget time. Went back and looked at the budget, we provided $617,000 for vehicle replacement. Now, when we look at those numbers, we don't know exactly what's that for. And then I go and look at the department, well, I don't even show us showing we were going to get a replacement, but that we were adding a full-time employee paramedic, which is good. And so the idea was, if you could provide and get expanded coverage with a Type 2 vehicle and still have three full-time big box machines, could you do well with that? And based on the actual dollars that you provided, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me now, like I was hearing. I was hearing $500,000 for a chassis and a nuts. I was looking, I think, oh my gosh, a whole $617,000 is being provided for that. And that's not the case because we're going to be replacing some vehicles here a little later on. So I really, I really appreciate the fact that you provided this to me. And I, and I don't have a problem with $330,000. And life expectancy, five to seven years, and you can do a refresh. Or the bang for the buck, you're going to get the best vehicle in the big box. But I didn't know what this number was until tonight, or actually until the deal. The premise of it was not just falling. It was, it was can we provide a service for situations where it's not as serious? And our dispatchers are very good. And could they send them for a broken arm over at a school, get that taken care of? You can transport in the Type 2 vehicles, and you save on FTEs. But after I reviewed the cost and everything, I have no problem with the box one, okay? And like I said before, I thank y'all from the bottom of my heart for my dad. Appreciate that. And two, I do want to say the last week and a half, two weeks, I've had an explosion on a fire, on an electrical pole at my house that's knocked the power out. And when I called 911, when the dispatcher was off, I heard the fire truck coming. And within six minutes, they were at my house. So our response times were stellar. And I'm very proud of all of our staff. I just wanted to, thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
Dr. Longoria, yes, another question?
Not a, not a question, but a comment. I think you're raising the issue, Robert, is a legitimate question when you ask it. And I appreciate your presentation. I think your, your experience, your, over the decades, your reputation and how you managed your budgets and how you manage your business deserves our trust. And in fact, I have no problem supporting.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on, item 6B, discuss the permitted heights of plants, trees, and branches in our, in over-restricted areas, including visibility triangles and other travel public ways. Morad?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, Judge Ellisore. You may recall last month, we had a resident come and speak to council about tree trimming on their private property that was completed by our Public Works Department. As such, council member asked that we place this on a subsequent meeting so that we can discuss the city's current policies and then more specifically that property and offer any suggestions or input that council may have. So our current ordinance was recently updated in 2024, ordinance 2024-22. In that ordinance, council refined the height clearances that are necessary over the roadways of travel. And the intent was to clarify the height clearance over sidewalks as well, but there's still some ambiguity there that needs to be cleaned up. The purpose of the clearance is to provide protection for the motor vehicles that travel our roadway, the larger vehicles such as fire trucks, our trash garbage trucks, as well as our school buses that routinely go up and down the streets. Even though the trees typically are on private property, they overhang those public right-of-ways and cause a nuisance and potential damage to vehicles that are on those roadways. So the average height of our equipment for buses, fire trucks, et cetera, are typically about 13 to 14 feet tall. Building and fire code require at least a clearance of about 14 feet of any overhangs or anything else. So city of Friendswood evaluated our current ordinance and compared ourselves with other cities and adopted a height elevation of 15 feet. One, to be consistent with those neighboring properties, but two, to account for the time in between the trimming and the regrowth of branches, as well as when it rains, those tree branches get heavy and they tend to sag. So if you look at the neighboring properties or the neighboring communities, the city of League City and Pearland both have 15-foot clearance, much like the city of Friendswood. Alvin has 12 feet, and City of Webster has 14 feet. So we weren't necessarily out of the ballpark, but we were relatively close. Currently, the procedures are, we receive a complaint, whether it's a motorist or typically 99% of our complaints come from the school districts, either FISD or CCISD. As they prepare for the upcoming school year, they have their buses do a test run. And in the process of completing their test run, they identify low-hanging branches, and they will send us a note that says, hey, we have a list of X number of houses, streets that have trees that are overhanging the roadway. They're problematic for us, and we need you to go out there and trim them. So as such, when we receive those complaints, we notify the property owners as soon as possible that, hey, you have a potential conflict, and you insist in getting the issue remedied. In the case of larger, and let me back up. If the homeowner's not able to remedy this situation, then we have our Public Works crews go out there and do the tree trimming. Obviously, they, they're limited in what they're capable of doing in terms of the size of the branches. So if it's a very large branch or a very large tree that's going to require a lot of hands-on deck, we may contract that out to a third party to help us with that. So if the property owner asks for a particular amount of time to trim the trees, we work with them. We don't send crews out there the very next day. Typically, it takes about 30 to 45 days. In the meantime, what the school buses do, until the tree gets trimmed, they go into the oncoming lane of traffic to avoid hitting those tree limbs so that they don't cause any damage to the vehicle. There have been times that we've allowed for greater time allowances, whether it's 30 days, 45 days, 60 days. We work with homeowners. We don't want to be the ones trimming the trees simply because we're not arborists. We go out there and we cut at the property line, which is the right-of-way line. And we don't go all the way back to the trunk of the tree because a lot of time, the trunk of the tree is nowhere near the property line, it's further inside the property. If the homeowner fails to get it trimmed in the time period necessary, then we will go out there and we will trim it, as I indicated, at the property line. Public Works crews stay within the right-of-way at all times. We don't get on private property. We don't have the authority to get on private property to trim the trees. So if you can tell by the image on the screen before you, this is at 2:10 dawn. We draw an imaginary line straight up from the back of curb in this location. an imaginary line straight up from the back of curb in this location, and the tree trimming takes place where that branch overhangs our street. So yes, it does, doesn't look aesthetically pleasing, but we can't take it to the, the trunk of the tree. If the tree limbs are higher than 15 feet at the curb but are projecting or hanging below 15 feet over the travel lanes, or for instance, if the main branch coming off the main trunk is higher than 15 feet at the curb, but then at the end of the, the branch has things that are overhanging that's lower than 15 feet, then we'll just trim the part that's lower. We, we don't necessarily go back to the, the right-of-way line. A few weeks after council adopted the updated ordinance in August of last year, our social media group and communications put out messaging on our various platforms that gave a little bit of graphic for folks, hopefully that folks may tackle this preemptively. So go out and assess your trees, if it's, if it's in violation of our ordinance, if you could, go ahead and have your landscaper or have somebody trim them that can do a little bit more careful and thorough job with your protected asset being the trees. The property in question that was discussed last month during public comments is 1215 Marywood. This particular house and tree has been on our radar since 2019. It's a fairly substantial tree, as you've heard last month by the resident, or you may have seen on social media. It was under a previous owner than the one that spoke last month. But in 2019, the, the city received complaints about the tree overhanging the lane of travel, and we engaged the property owner. The property owner wasn't able to address the matter in a timely position, we, a timely manner, and we asked their permission to go ahead and trim the tree, and they said, go right ahead. So our Public Works crews trimmed it in 2019, and in 2021, again, the homeowner worked with us, they worked with us in the sense that they weren't upset that the city was doing it, they just didn't hire a landscaper to do it. Most recently, though, the, the particular tree in question continued to become more and more of a nuisance. We got complaints from the school district, we got complaints from motorists, because the tree had gotten to the point where it was almost eight or nine feet above the travel lane of Marywood. It's right where Marywood makes a bend behind the old Klein Elementary, so it was becoming quite a bit of a nuisance. So in June of 2025, we had contacted the homeowner, said, hey, we've received a complaint, we need the, this tree trimmed, in June of 2025, so just at the start of the summer from this last school year that we completed. Our assistant superintendent spoke directly with the resident and informed them of the violation and gave them a copy of the ordinance itself. So they were told in June of this year, hey, you need to tree, trim this tree, and these are the clearances by which you need to provide. Fast forward to September, we received another complaint, and when we went out there to verify if it had been trimmed, it had not been trimmed. So we made contact again with the same homeowner that we spoke to and gave them the ordinance in June, we spoke to them in September. The second engagement in September, they said, yes, we'll go ahead and take care of it, please give us some more time, we'll have a landscaper out there to take care of it. So we gave them a few more days. Over the weekend, unfortunately, the, the landscaper that they come, had come out there and trim it, did not cut to the 15-foot clearance at the right-of-way line, so our crews had to go out and take care of the issue. There were some posts on social media that many of you saw, there were some commentary stated last week that the city just butchered their tree, and it, it will never recover, it will never look the same. We have been out there multiple times, the tree, this is the current picture of the tree, the tree does not look horrendous. Again, our guys, though they're great at everything they do, they're not, they're not licensed landscapers or arborists, so, and they're limited to the right-of-way line. So they cut back the tree to the right-of-way line and over the sidewalk to make sure that the proper clearances were met, but the, they didn't butcher the tree, they didn't kill the tree, the tree is still fairly, it's still thriving. One thing in reviewing all this, or two things that we noted that we'd like to do differently moving forward, is in addition to giving them a written notice, we'd, I'd like our crews to take a picture before they trim it with some sort of rod that measures the height, which we already have with us, that we can show, document that they're overhanging the tree, and it's slower than the provided clearance. The second thing is that we clarify over the sidewalks, because it, the intent is 10 feet, but typically it says are otherwise reasonably possible, and anytime you use the term reasonably possible, there are some ambiguities. So my definition of reasonable may be different from yours. I am not six feet, but if I'm working with somebody that's 6'5", well, they may want it a little higher. So just things to take into consideration. But with that, I am available to answer any questions council may have.
Well, I would thank you for looking into it, and two, that there were some more facts that we needed to go and take another look, kind of a fresh look at, at the ordinance. So based on what you're saying, there are a few cleanup things we need to do, and then on our ordinance, and then the policies and procedures on implementing that ordinance, you're gonna look at some communication improvements on that, if towns like.
Yes, sir.
So, so thank you for, for looking into it and reporting back.
Yes, sir.
I'd too like to thank your efforts. I know this came up on social media, and I was one of the ones that they reached out to, and I want to thank you for your effort. Having this history was very helpful, but I also like the addition that you're talking about, which is take a picture before we start chopping the tree. So appreciate that very much. Documentation, pictures worth a thousand words, right?
Pictures worth a thousand words, and I would encourage folks to contact our office, and we had comments tonight as well on another matter. You can contact the city manager's office to engage, you don't have to go straight to social media, you don't have to necessarily come to this body to make the complaint. Obviously, if we're not able to help you, come speak to council. Social media is a valuable tool, but it can also be weaponized, and that's unfortunate.
Well, Mo, I, I think Joe Matranga may be right that revisiting the tree ordinance would probably be a good thing. Now, in this particular instance, that canopy is probably 60, and the, the tree itself is in, within the property itself, but it just extended so far out over our own easel. But we may consider what we are thinking about when it comes to these trees in our easel, and, and getting in our lines, you can drive up and down Spreading's Oak and Shadow Bend and see what they've done with Earl and these other hurricanes, and I know what, where all of that debris goes. And I, I think that, that Joe may be right, we, we probably should revisit, or at least figure out what type of trees that really need to go in there. It, it is a real strain on all of our resources to, I've seen them out all summer long, and they have been cutting everywhere that they could possibly cut, and, and I think that it's something we all need to revisit maybe, but that's, that's my thought on it, because it's holding up development, it's got people all twisted in, in all kinds of ways, because some people love trees more than others, and it's just something we could probably get a balance on.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm, I'm a tree lover, I have trees in my front yard and backyard, so I'm sensitive to, you know, how they look, and we all take pride in our, our home, and trees are definitely a, a big part of, of the aesthetics of, of our yard. So I, I felt for the people in question that, that, that they, they felt like we had done too much, but it sure sounds like we did it the bare minimum that we had to do to prevent problems to school buses and other vehicles. So unfortunate, but I, I just want to say, you know, although I, I appreciate your agreement, I'm not, I, I really thought that over the last month since our last council meeting, and based on our conversation, Morad, that you had already kind of taken on that relook and felt like there was a couple, couple things to clean up that you're gonna come back to us on.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is 6:28 PM. I now call to order the public hearing regarding the request for an amendment to the future land use map for the property located at 401 West Edgewood Drive, also known as McCreeken Manor Final Platte, a subdivision containing 3.9187 acre tract of land out of Lot 2, Block 1, Friendswood, Volume 238, Page 14, Sarah McKissick survey, abstract 151, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, to change the future land use map from low-density residential to retail. If we could get an overview of that item from the staff, please?
Um, yes, sir. Good evening. Um, we had slides for them, but it's okay. Good evening. So this is a request from a property owner, they'd like to change the zoning on a particular piece of property at 401 West Edgewood from residential to commercial. So in order to make that change, the future land use map needs to be amended first. This particular property does border on the future land use map, it's right on the edge of commercial and residential, and honestly, if you look at the rezoning report, this property has flip-flopped back and forth over the past several years, trying to develop. So the request tonight was to, is to change the future land use map from low-density residential to retail. All the notices were published, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted at their last meeting in favor of the request five to zero for a positive recommendation.
All right, do we have anyone who has asked to speak? Apparently not.
No, sir.
All right. If there's no further discussion, no one desiring to speak, I will close this public hearing regarding amendment of the future land use map. Moving on to 7B, consider approving an ordinance amending the future land use map for this property as described earlier, to change from low-density to residential, or excuse me, to retail. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Who gave the motion?
Me.
Second? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? It passes. All right, moving on to item 7C, it is now 6:33 PM. I call to order the public hearing regarding a request for a zone classification change to the property located at 401 Edgewood Drive, known as McCreeken Manor Final Platte, a subdivision containing 3.9187 acre tract of land out of Lot 2, Block 1, Friendswood, Volume 238, Page 14, Sarah McKissick survey, abstract 151, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, to change the zoning from single-family residence to community shopping center. Yes?
Uh, yes, sir. So this is the zone change request following the amendment of future, future land use map. The proposal is to change the zoning of the property from single-family residential to a community shopping center. Once they develop, they will need to submit, replat's gonna be required, and then they'll do site plan with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the property will be subject to the community overlay district requirements during development. The Planning and Zoning Commission also had their public hearing on this and forwarded a positive recommendation as well.
All right, is there anyone desiring to speak on this issue? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing and move on to item 7D, consider approving an ordinance amending the city's official zoning map, change the zoning classification for the property located at 401 West Edgewood Drive, known as McCreeken Manor Flat Final Platte, a subdivision containing 3.9187 acre tract of land out of Lot 2, Block 1, Friendswood, Volume 238, Page 14, Sarah McKissick survey, abstract 151, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, to change the zoning from single-family resident, residential to community shopping center. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Uh, just a, just a quick question. Aubrey, so since we don't have, didn't have the slides up tonight, or see them, this property has been changed, I think, what, six or seven times over the last 10 years roughly, call it plus or minus. It's been retail, it's been commercial, it's been residential, it's been multifamily, it's been single-family, it's been back and forth many times. When I was on planning and zoning, it, I think it changed once or twice there. Refresh, refresh, refresh me in, for everyone here, the surrounding property zoning of this property is what? I know there's some single-family residential, but what else is there?
Um, so if you're facing the property from Edgewood Drive, to the right is a large single-family residential tract, that's pretty much the same, was the same size as this original tract. To the left is some retail along the front, frontage on Edgewood, the Mobile Home Park is to the left behind the commercial, and then it backs up to Montebello Subdivision. And actually, the resident that back, one of the residents that backs up to this property purchased this property and incorporated a portion of it into their lot, and then replatted the remainder of it, so they bought and created their own buffer to this property.
Okay, so in, in, if this is rezoned to community shopping, would any development, commercial development have to put in any sort of barrier landscaping between it and any of the residential?
Um, so the minimum requirement typically for a commercial to residential site is an eight-foot opaque fence, a 10 to 15-foot landscape buffer with a tree every 25 feet for screening purposes. There are exceptions to that, and there alternate plans, like if there's existing vegetation, could be used as well.
Okay. And from a height perspective, if I remember correctly, either single-family residential or community shopping are both limited to about 40 feet, is that, do I remember that correctly?
Uh, yes, yes, sir. There are some exceptions to go taller, but you have to be two and a half times the height of the building away from the single-family residential zoning to go higher.
Okay. Yeah, it's back to not wanting anybody with a commercial building to look into anybody's backyard.
Right.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes. All right, city managers report?
Counsel, this evening, I'm gonna do things a little bit differently in my city manager's report, I came up to the podium, because there's an, an employee I'd like to recognize at the end of my report, but he's gonna have to wait a little bit longer. Once again, for 2025, the City of Friendswood has received a designation of top workplaces. The latest numbers over the nearly 6,000 companies and organizations of our size are within this bracket, less than 100, I believe 71 were selected, so well done to the employees and the organization that we have here in Friendswood. These are completely anonymous surveys that are completed by the employees themselves. So last year, we had, I think, about a 30% participation rate, this year we had over 50%, which was spectacular. I credit it to the leadership by this council and the, the, the support they provide staff in making this such a wonderful organization to work for, so thank you, and kudos to the department heads and everybody else that make this happen on a day-to-day basis.
Congratulations.
If you do frequent our park, over Stevenson Park, you may have noticed a lot of updates over the last year. Our park staff has been busy maintaining different things and also upgrading them. You may have noticed the Rotary Pavilion being restained, you may have noticed the new canopies that were installed near the splash pad to provide shade to parents and other parkgoers as their kids play in the splash pad, or vice versa, if the kids are in the shade and the parents are paying and playing the splash pad. You've seen some improved drainage with some conduits placed underneath the trail system and some new ditches and swells dug within the, the park. You've seen some of the new lighting that's at our entryway, the arch that was provided by the KFB, or Keep Texas Beautiful grant that KFB got. There's some wreaths growing up, going up right now for Christmas on the Stevenson Park entryway sign that are very nice. And here, over the next week and a half, you're gonna see the installation of a very, very, very tall Christmas tree, I believe 40 or 50 feet tall, that's gonna be absolutely stunning, so we're really looking forward to it. So kudos to the park staff and all their hard work this past year at Stevenson Park. Council member Trish Hanks had mentioned earlier tonight, Fall Hall is coming up, it will be this upcoming Saturday at Centennial Park from 8 to 2. These are usually heavily utilized by our, our residents, and we encourage folks to come out. There is a limitation on the amount of paper you can come bring to shred, I believe it's 200 pounds per vehicle, and you do need to have an ID or something that shows that you're a Friendswood resident if you're participating, or drop it off in one of the vehicles of the council members beforehand and ask them to take it for you.
Thank you.
I will not read everything on this list, but we are getting into the holiday season, so there's a number of activities that will be taking place. so there's a number of activities that will be taking place. I know council member Graffon mentioned the Veterans Day lunch that will be next Monday, a week from today. Our deputy city manager, Stephen Ray, has some signs we still have in his office. Our, our communications director, Glenda, has them. For folks that are interested, businesses that are interested in getting veterans only and first responders only parking spaces at their business or place of work, they can contact our office and we can work with them to give them the sign, and they can install it themselves, or we can install it for them for a nominal fee, I believe, of a hundred dollars. So, we still have about another fifteen of those signs available. There are a number of activities going on, both in parks as well as our Friendswood library. One I'm most excited about is the lighting of the, the lighted trail in Stevenson Park the week of Thanksgiving. So, you're already starting to see some of those activities take place and some of those improvements go up, but it's going to be beautiful.
Before you leave that, are you going to announce the tree, anything about the tree this year? That it is going to be the second one in the nation, the second largest one in the nation?
I, I believe you just did.
No, I want you to describe it.
The only other one, like, it's in Beverly Hills.
Beverly Hills, yes.
That you can walk through.
That you can walk through.
You can, you can walk through. Robert, you may have to duck, you're a little taller than the most of us, but everybody else should be able to walk through.
I'm going to walk through it.
No, but a big thank you to FDEDC that made that possible, as well as a number of sponsors in the community, the Handy Family being one of them that made that come through, as well as Hometown Bank. So, we're really excited about that. I have heard rumors that there'll be another Elf video produced where yours truly will be reprising his role from last year to celebrate that tree, so can't wait to see that. Finally, I'd like to recognize our assistant director of Parks and Recreation, Gary Williams. He announced recently that he will be retiring from the city of Friendswood after twenty-four years plus of service. He is here this evening with his wife, Nancy.
Wow. Congratulations.
Gary has worked in multiple roles in our organization, both in community development as well as parks and recreation. He has been a fantastic asset to our community, definitely a hard worker to making all these things possible. He is a man of a thousand words, by the way. If you've never heard his impressions, they're spectacular. Not of council members, but just in general. But we can't thank Gary enough for his service to our community, and we want to present him with a little token, and if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to.
I would like to, real quick, just thank you, counsel, for all y'all's support for Parks and Rec. It's always been appreciated. I wish the mayor would be here, tell him he's a rare breed, and say that in a good way. One of the funniest guys I know. Murad had, was the director of my department when I was in the community development, and of course, city manager, and he is one of the fairest people I know when it comes with dealing with the public and his employees and just supporting his staff. James Tony, don't let the nice clothes and shoes fool you. He's very humble. He really shows what it means to have that role of leadership through servant hood. You can find him going through the park or parking lot, he sees trash, he picks it up. Nothing's beyond him to, you know, do and take care of. For my wife, who has supported me as I went from the private sector to the city, there were some humble beginnings, but God blessed me with some good opportunities and some challenges, and I have an awesome staff that's made it all happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, item nine nine A. Consider authorizing the formation of an ad hoc comprehensive plan advisory committee and confirming appointments thereto. Morad?
Yes, sir. I believe our director of community development, Aubrey, will present this item. He's far more knowledgeable than I am.
Yes, so, our Dura Group came and gave you the introduction last month for the comprehensive plan update. So, part of that process is updating, or is appointing an advisory committee that will work with them and staff throughout the process. They will have probably at least four meetings, possibly five. We're hoping to have the first kickoff meeting in December before the end of the year, and the consultants talking about hopefully maybe doing a bus tour with them, just to get their input and help, you know, establish some of the vision and guiding principles that are going to be in the plan. So, we, there's seventeen people. Three of them are, are planning and zoning commissioners. We have the commission broken into two subcommittees. There's the ordinance subcommittee and the planning subcommittee. So, the ordinance subcommittee works on, you know, those ordinance changes. Planning subcommittee does the more long-term, long-range plans. So, they will definitely be on the subcommittee or the advisory committee. And then we've got just FISD, CCISD, BayHEP, Realtors. We've got, I think, a pretty good range of people on this committee that hopefully will help us with a good product in the end.
All right, any questions regarding this issue?
So, once you get the comprehensive plan and we get it updated and everything, what is the goal? What is the next step? Where do we go? Send that through planning and zoning and the ordinance writers, and they then look at the ordinance to see if they comply with the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so, the comprehensive plan will have goals and objectives. They're very high-level, so that other plans can look toward that one for guidance. It's just visioning, like, what do we want our city to look like? We will, the second phase of their project is to update our zoning ordinance to make any changes to our zoning ordinance that need to align with the updated comprehensive plan.
The timeframe for this operate, it's about a year's worth of work?
Yes, the comp plan is about a year, which is relatively fast for this type of project. And then the zoning ordinance update would be the second year. And going, like, once we have the comprehensive plan update, we'll establish a re-review, like, we're not going to let it sit on the shelf and, you know, get dusty again for, for another twenty years. So, we'll use it, you know, daily in our decisions, and hopefully you will too. And then maybe every five years, you know, do a comprehensive look at it and just keep it fresh.
It will be a living document, basically.
Yes. Yeah.
Aubrey, would you remind me, the funding for this did not come from the city of Friendswood? Where was, where was it from?
It's a resilient communities program from the general land office.
So, that's fantastic job on leveraging, you know, and getting those kind of grants and money. So, thank, thank you for that. What's the, when, when it's done, will it come back before council for presentation?
Yes, yes. Yeah, y'all, the survey was provided to you, the survey's available to the public right now. Communications did an email blast a couple weeks ago. I think by Sunday, we already had two hundred responses from Friday to Sunday. So, you know, we pushed, or, you know, gave out information at Halloween in the park with flyers asking people to fill out the survey. So, if you can share that with your friends and family, that's their opportunity to, like, there's questions on there, like, you know, what do you love about Friendswood? What would you like to see different about Friendswood? Like, if you left Friendswood and came back in ten years, what would you want to see? So, they're trying to really, and small-town community is like a resound, they, I mean, it's, you know, they do the, the big words on their results, and so, they're already like, what does this small-town, you know, small-community feel? Like, they're wanting to dive into that a little bit more to see, like, what is small-town, their small-community to Friendswood, so that they can capture that in the plan.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion on item nine A?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item B is consider authorizing an economic development agreement with All-Out Development, Inc., inserting the redevelopment of the property located at three oh three North Friendswood Drive.
Yes, sir. So, this particular project is located on North Friendswood Drive, near the Kroger Shopping, Kroger Grocery Store. The particular business in question currently is in the city of Pearland. We've stolen them, they're relocating their shop here in Friendswood and investing, I believe, three million dollars in renovation and expansion to the, to the site. The economic incentive is about thirty thousand dollars that will be paid at the completion of the certificate of bond.
Okay, do I have a motion regarding this item?
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Passes, thank you. Item nine C, consider authorizing a professional services agreement with Guy Engineering Services, Inc., for the Greenbrier Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Morad?
Our director of engineering, Bill Arias, will be presenting.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Wanted to present on this. I wanted to give you a little bit of a background first on this bridge. This is a, a bridge that's located on Greenbrier at Chigger Creek, south of the high school. A little bit of a history on that bridge. About three years ago, the approaches to the bridge started settling pretty bad. So much to the point to where it became the biggest speed hump in Friendswood. And at the time, our public works shut down Greenbrier for a couple of days, and they had to do some rehab work by mudjacking the street backup. That's what they usually do on sidewalks. It worked for us to bring the street up for a little bit, but we knew that we were living on borrowed time. And so, we knew at the time that we needed to start planning ahead, and we needed to do something a little bit more resilient. So, that's where we are now. This contract with Guy Engineering, they will start with a comprehensive inspection of the bridge, make sure we're not missing anything. And after that, they will prepare some plans for us and help get us ready to send that out for bid. Right now, we are planning on having all that done, have that out. If everything works out well, we're going to shoot for this coming summer to have this street shut down for a couple of weeks while school is out, with the goal of having it back open before school's in session. So, that's the goal right now. Hopefully, everything works out, and that's where we're at right now.
Questions regarding this item?
I was just curious, what's the approximate age of this particular bridge?
So, this is a approximately, it's getting there to about forty-one years of age now? Forty years?
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion regarding this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It passes. All right, item ten A, consider on first reading and ordinance granting a franchise agreement to Waste Connections of Texas LLC for collection, hauling, recycling, and disposal of municipal solid waste and recyclable materials in the city of Friendswood.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Protem, you may recall, the city has been discussing our current solid waste services for the last several months, dating back to 2024. Most recently, we had a workshop to go over the citywide survey that took place, which we, can you go to the next slide? We did a citywide survey. We sent postcards with QR codes for folks to engage and do a survey to over fourteen thousand different accounts. We boosted it on our social media, and we got over eighteen hundred, nearly eighteen hundred responses, as you can tell on the heat map on the left side of this slide. Pretty good coverage of the city of Friendswood in terms of cross-section of our community. The responses were overwhelmingly positive, in which the folks were very happy with their current service levels that are provided by Waste Connections, our current solid waste provider, as both in the frequency of service, the type of service, both with once-a-week recycling, heavy haul every week, so on and so forth. At that workshop, council directed us to move forward with negotiating a new contract with Waste Connection, which we have. Next slide, please. The current, the agreement that you had before you was no change to the service model. So, we have manual lift rear load truck. Our community, though we had a pleasant pilot program with automated side-load trucks, the market wasn't quite right for Waste Connection to go in that direction just yet, and there was some hesitancy by our residents as well. So, we're delaying that, that discussion for a later date, future contract eventually. We're going to still maintain the number of service days, so twice a week trash service in our community, once a week heavy haul, as well as once a week recycling, either the eighteen-gallon bin or the ninety-five-gallon bin, depending on your preference. We are also put in this agreement some additional route requirements. So, there was a problem with our Wednesday service model, and the folks that live in the area that serviced on Wednesday had several instances this past spring in which their trash wasn't picked up till the next day, which became problematic for us, though the contract stipulates that they will put in additional routes if necessary to make sure that their service don't make the exact same pay. Next slide, please. If you compare our current and our proposed rate as to our neighboring cities, we are still within the ballpark, both in frequency as well as dollar amount. I will say that the, when we had looked at going out for bids and what we saw other communities receiving, the price point was going to be quite a bit higher. That's why we continued to stay with our current service provider. If we did not give overwhelming support in our survey, we would have gone a different direction. If our residents said, hey, we wanted to consider something else. The survey even talked about pricing. Hey, are you happy with the current pricing? Are you willing to pay more if the cost of services go up? And even though it wasn't one-hundred percent yes, please rate us our rates, there was still majority of, said they would be willing to pay more to maintain this current service model. They pick up everything at the curb. I've seen sectionals picked up, I've seen quite a bit of things picked up at the curb. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, that was the last slide. So, are there any comments or questions? This is a three-year agreement to maintain our current service provider at Waste Connection.
All right, do we have a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Passes.
Thank you.
Item ten B, consider on first reading and ordinance amending appendix D, schedule of fees, rates, charges, deposits, bonds, and insurance amounts for the city of Friendswood Co. to update the solid waste fees commensurate with the solid waste franchise agreement.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Protem, this is the, updating our fees to reflect the recent approval of the franchise agreement with Waste Connection.
Questions? We have a motion?
A move.
Second.
All in favor? Passes. Item ten C, consider on second and final reading and ordinance amending chapter two, administration article two, boards, committees, and commissions, division one generally, section two dash two one, definitions in division ten, planning and zoning commission, section two dash seventy-three, powers and duties of Friendswood City Code, and amending chapter two, administration article three, boards, committees, and commissions, and Friendswood City Code to add a new division to be numbered and titled Division Two Point Five, Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, to establish a new committee to perform the duties and functions referred on such, a committee by chapter three ninety-five of the Texas Local Government Code, and amending chapter seventy, streets, sidewalks, and other public places, article three, construction, section seventy point sixty-four, sidewalks required to refine the duties of the planning and zoning commission with respect to sidewalks by removing the sidewalk installation fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
You want to just do a quick overview on that?
Sure. So, recently, the state legislature passed a law that said we can no longer use our planning and zoning commission as our capital improvements advisory committee relative grant fee. So, we have to establish a new committee of members made up predominantly of real estate development background. That's what this item is doing, as well as cleaning up language regarding the removal of the sidewalk installation fund, which we've discussed in previous council meetings. The fund has funding in it, the intent is if sidewalk needed, developers are supposed to install it at the time of construction.
Doing away with the sidewalk fund doesn't mean that we're not going to take care of the sidewalk.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor? It passes. All right, item 10D, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 by approving Budget Amendment 1 and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is our first budget amendment for fiscal year '26. It covers routine appropriation of funds based on prior approved council contracts as well as receivables from various grants and insurance outlets.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Passes. All right, 10E, consider a resolution finding that public convenience and necessity requires the acquisition of 5.452 acres of land located adjacent to the southeast portion of Lake Friendswood, and being a part of the INGNRR company survey, Section 3, Abstract 614, Galveston County, Texas, and being a part of the original Galveston-Houston interurban land company subdivision, Division A, and also being that same tract of land described as tract 2 in a deed recorded in Volume 2621, Page 279, in the office of the County Clerk of Galveston County, Texas, for the expansion of Lake Friendswood Park and authorizing eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of fee simple interest thereof from Joseph V. Tostado. Morad?
Mr. Mayor Protem, so as you know, we've been talking about this particular property since the early 1990s, when the city of Friendswood initially took possession of Lake Friendswood from Galveston County Parks Board. Over the years, there have been a number of lawsuits filed and legal battles on the property relative to the five acres of the southeast corner of the 40-acre, or there about, tract. The five-acre property in question has some improvements on it within some easements that we believe to exist. Most recently, the property was, the claim against the city was non-suited, meaning the plaintiff withdrew their lawsuit against the city of Friendswood, so the property is currently not under contest. Though we don't have any legal reason in terms of no pending litigation to promote us acquiring the property, we think it's in the best interest of the city and the property owner to simply acquire the property outright, so that it's no longer a question for future councils nor a question for a future property owner. So, we've extended an offer on the property, we've gotten no response. We are seeking council's authority to start eminent domain proceedings at which time we would do a market value appraisal, and we would make an offer in accordance with that appraisal.
If we could ask the city attorney to just give us the thumbnail sketch of how eminent domain would work in these proceedings.
Closer to your microphone, please.
The statute requires that we provide a letter to the landowner, so we have done that at this point. The next step would be to continue to try and negotiate if we can engage, and if not, we'll submit a final offer based upon a appraised value of the property, and we will provide that appraisal also to the landowner. From there, there's a certain period of time that they can accept or not accept the offer, but this allows you, this action tonight allows us to continue on with that, and if necessary, file a proceeding in eminent domain against the property owner. Then, at that point, we will get three commissioners, or three commissioners will meet and determine value, and at that point, the city can pay that, put it in the conference of the court, and there can be appeal, or it can continue on, however it will be. But at that point, once we tender the money to the court, the city has possession of the property.
Thank you. All right, are there any other questions or discussion?
Mo and Karen, I know that everybody up here, the mayor and everybody up here, takes very seriously any aspect of eminent domain and condemning properties for public use. How long have we been on this Tostado property, negotiating to try to get something worked out on this property?
For 22 years, both with the current owner and his father before he passed.
And made numerous offers?
Multiple offers, six-figure-plus offers. It's on the roll for $40 total valuation right now.
And this has been in the legal realm for years?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, just a couple of comments and questions. I, too, take this extremely seriously. I know even way before my time, the city has been working on this. I support it. I believe it's the only path left open to us to resolve this once and for all, for all future councils and residents. You know, you stated, but for the record, I'll make sure everybody heard you correctly, right now, in the appraisal district, it's this property, this five acres, three of which approximately is underwater in the lake.
Yes, sir.
And two is on land, completely landlocked, if I remember my facts correctly, but it's on the appraisal district, although not definitive, not an official appraisal, for $40.
That is correct.
Value. And although we're not gonna discuss exact amounts, we've offered many, many multiples of that.
Correct.
In fair and reasonable, at least, we thought it was fair and reasonable to settle this, correct?
Correct. And one correction in one of my comments, I said 22 years, 32 years we've been dealing with this property, not 22.
All right, do we have a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? It passes. All right, item 11, the consent agenda. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? 11A, that's all, consent agenda. If there are no further issues, we will adjourn this meeting.